Are we back on note?
Yes.
So, Russ, you wanna...
Actually, do you wanna remind people that this is a workshop?
Yes. Since we're live again, this is gonna be a workshop and we will not be taking calls from the public. We just wanna hit the ground and see what the feelings are of Greenville Township trustees, council members, the three council members from the city, Chief Welling, Chief Thompson, and see what we can get working. The relationship between the city and township is the best it's ever been, and I wanna thank both of you guys. You two, Russ. Uh, who wants to start first?
I think Brian's gonna start first.
Oh, okay.
All right, Assistant Chief with Greenville Township Emergency Services, Brian Phillips. Good evening to everybody in the light of first step, the elected officials. For allowing the chief officer of Greenville City Fire and Greenville Township Emergency Services to explore the joint fire and EMS district, departments coming together as well. We truly appreciate the support that you have given and continue to give to the departments. Our chief officers have spent a lot of time over the past several months reviewing our current budgets and exploring what a joint district would look like financially. Chief Welling and Chief Thompson will give the detailed stats. Greenville City Fire and Greenville Township Emergency Services have had an extent of history of tension between the two agencies that go back many years. This tension has been exhausting for the first responders, the elected officials, and most importantly, the community. I have seen decisions that were based off personal agenda versus what matters the most, the community. I'm not here to talk about the past. The past is the past, and it's time to move forward. We can sit here for hours pointing fingers and blaming each other for what happened or legit happened in the past, but all it's going to do is compromise our ability to move forward in the future. The future can be brighter, and I feel that we have the right department administrators and elected officials to play end legs to do so. We owe it to the community we serve to come together and work diligently on a plan to provide a more efficient and cost-saving service to the citizens. The two departments have made a lot of progress in the last couple of years. We are building good relationships. We are conducting some training to make an operational change that improve the service the public has received. This is the first time in life's one-year career in the township that we are finally creating a good relationship and utilizing each other's resources to better serve citizens in Greenville Township and the city of Greenville. To give you a couple of examples of this, both departments are out there responding to automatic reconstruction fires within the city and township, facilities that have not been responded. Greenville City Fire is also responding by hiring more than half the staffs, which also is a big natural response, and has decreased to not as usually a figure to be used by the EMS departments. It is important that we continue to explore our joint mention for so many reasons. I'd like to briefly come up with a list, and then I can only give you a few examples of each category. First, made money bills. Just for comparison, the Pickle Fire Department, which serves approximately 24,000 people, has seven pieces of fire apparatus. Our community serves approximately 18,000 people, has 11 pieces of the fire apparatus. Reducing our fleet and emergency vehicles alone would be a huge money saver. Fire apparatus is not getting any cheaper than the mentioned equipment that is needed to stop it and continue what it's making. We could also reduce the amount of firefighting. SBA and certification are also very expensive.
If you don't believe, then you can't go.
It was high when we reduced the full-time apparatus in the initial level.
Can't go.
I'm hopeful that it improves and attention. I would say the number is increasing, and departments are struggling to recruit that intent. This problem is awkward whether you're a volunteer department or a career department. The market is wide open right now. Departments are seeing less applicants causing alarming concern. There are departments who used to get a hard applicant, and now they're only getting handfuls. We are also seeing ramifications globally. The city of Greenville and Greenville Township is no longer getting the applicants that we used to. This is the last couple of years lost employees, Detroit, Sidney, Miami-Dade Fire District, and Englewood, in a few. It is becoming easier to land a high-paying job in one of these communities who have a tax support leading to use of Greenville or losing it. This leaves us of trying to find ways to attach future employees to our departments. In years past, there has been a lot of potential recruits that have passed public opportunity with Greenville because they wanted to be fired in the EMS. Becoming one department and doing both fire cameras under one umbrella will give us more diversity and make us more appealing for future recruits. Number three, continuity of operations. In our venture of creating a good working relationship and making operational changes, we have found that continuity is imperative. Operating under two separate policy procedures have been challenging and can create some potential safety concerns. Continuity is important to maintain our efficiency. I will end this introduction by saying this. Communities all over are trying their best to come up with a way to provide a secure future for their firing apparatus and tackling the challenges that I've already seen arise. The cities of Englewood, Plaquenham, Union recently began their venture of coming together in an unbelievable collaboration to utilize their personnel apparatus. It is important that we continue to explore other municipalities that are succeeding in their efforts. We are hearing more and more departments running around the joint district and all for a good reason. We continue to see an increase in our run volume here in Greenville. Combined EMS and fire calls for the city of Greenville and Greenville Township was a little over 4,000 calls. It's time to answer these 4,000 calls and a more efficient and cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Good report. General. Speaking. Russ and I are the past, gosh, how long have we been? Three months. I think we're looking at each other's budget expenditures and either budget obligations or revenue sources depending on the, you know, factors that we're looking at. We've been projecting that forward, looking at each other's pay, benefits, cost of equipment, everything along that. We work separately, we just put each other's numbers. I give you my numbers, she gives me her numbers in the book. And I go there and combine everything together. We use the statistics to decide if we can give you more work taking together. We're first on secret, we're close to the box. Projected amount, and working separately, we came in $20 million dollars projected forward. Thinking of a pretty good basis of the numbers considering that, you know, we didn't look at the numbers, we projected it forward, and we came back close. I believe there is a saying here, I believe just by Brian and Russ, that it will bring a lot more opportunities and will bring a lot more continuity. So it would help with the retention and basically, we're looking at this community structure. So if, as far as recruitment goes, if we get a recruitment or something like that, $20, that person is on the senior player or the candidate. So then it's the choice. So now they're taking, they're taking an employee that we can utilize wholly for services and their energy, as far as working in the township or working for the state, whereas if they were together, they would work the same way. And then you still have that employee, you let that employee be released, or sort of not, not in one versus the other. I'll let Russ, Russ have the spreadsheet with the numbers and stuff along the line. I'll let him go out there and...
Okay, I'm with Percy. The one that's on the top, what we did was, this is a district outlook, a joint fire EMS district. We took, first of all, let me back up. Traditional fire and EMS districts in this state are operated by property tax rates. We believe that this town, or this township, we could not produce such, those kinds of products needed to do this venture. So we went outside the box, per se, and are looking at the revenue streams that have been coming in, which are the fire and EMS levies of the township and the general fund for the city. We used 2019 numbers as a starting point and went from there on what revenues were available. So, like down there on the bottom on the revenues, where you see the city of Greenville, 2.3 plus, and it's carried out for 10 years, that's consistent, and that number was based off 2019. So, we've accounted for the salaries. This district, in the beginning of it, with our full-time staff combined, we have 39 employees. This district has 40. We had to add a position, which was a fiscal officer, or whatever you wanna call it, which is required by law for a district. So we actually added employees, and we gave a person a salary as a full-time employee in this, which maybe we not necessarily had to go version of assume that full-time positions just pre-served. So, and again, those numbers that we used for the salaries for the personnel and administrative staff, those were existing salaries based on local 1101s contract, which are the city firefighters. And we came up with our total wages, and then what our total operating was for the given year, and then you have the total expenditures. The capital expenses, in the beginning, there's, like in 2020, that figure is based on pretty much CIPs that were approved by the city. It's our ladder payment, our heart monitor payment, a couple other things that were projected out to 2023, and then after that, it just went flat to $100,000, you can anticipate. There's always gonna be $100,000, we need capital expenses, value, paying a payment on an apparatus and replacing turnout here, SBA or whatnot. We need to have a number in there that accounts for that. So we had our annual budget for each year from 2020 through 2030. You know that, and it's our department with the carryover that was brought in from the tax-based revenues. And you can see going up what that looks like going up, and you can see what the carryover amount is after this ten-year period. What started out as in 2020 and works as in 2030.
What, you said the carryovers from tax-based revenues, which tax-based revenues?
The EMS and the fire levies. Whatever that carryover is right now for the township, we actually count its worth, because it can only be used for fire EMS. That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. You'll see a spike or a really big difference in number, somewhat of a significance, in about 2025. You should see, yeah, or you should see that we dropped in our annual budget, and the reason being, we anticipate losing five people of scheduled retirements or whatnot, and we're not replacing those individuals. We wanted to get to a certain number, and that number was, well, at least for this model, would be 35, counting the clerk. So, makes sense? I'll take the clerk out of it. There's 34 fire and EMS personnel, counting the administration. Now, the quick, and keep in mind, this is, we put it all together, and that, they've ended this five years in that year. This, if we start losing people, we lose people sooner. If it was the do it, and people got upset and they quit, whatever the case is, the faster people, we lose five people, the more savings over the 10-year period. This was projecting the whole way up to the fifth year before we started losing them. Any questions on our district outlook?
So I take it the employees are just the full-time employees, no part-time?
Correct.
And it seems like the capital expenses are way too low. I mean, it starts.
And maybe, I mean, like I said, we can...
That doesn't buy much.
Project out.
Okay. This number's up top, I want that.
And depending on your questions on the district outlook. Okay, the state sheet looks the same, this one is, this is a city consolidation outlook, and we hit it for comparison. So that if all employees were merged over and consolidated under a municipal former government, is there another savings? Is there any savings? And if you look at the numbers, there is. The main reason for the differences, the two changes is two. The biggest one is that we eliminated the need to have a fiscal officer that the position's required to do. We started that salary at $60,000 for the first year and gave a 2% increase to every year thereafter, plus benefits and everything else. So when you eliminate that position for 10, over our 10-year periods, you make a significant savings. The other savings is health insurance. The city's health insurance is considerably cheaper than the township's. Those are the two biggest savings in that. And then we're gonna go, we can come back in the prior. Then on your last one, we did a comparison. Let me back up real quick. There is a third one. We have the option, you have the option, we could go to the township element. Just as we did a model for a city consolidation, we could go to a township consolidation, not a district that's governed by the township. We did not do a spreadsheet to show what the 10-year outlook would be. We could do that if required. Using a little bit of common sense, we decided that we know it's somewhere between a district and a city of what the savings would be or how much money it would cost each year.
Because you take the clerk out, it's the closer the larger the problem seems likely to rush. And I mean, and we're projecting that, and we're going to go for that with the do it requires the group. With the city insurance, you have all the things for you, but the township's employees are considered smaller. And also, too...
But if you're adding people to it, then it's not as small or as big.
If it's not as small, then that's something that we can also hide out, and we can do, kind of have a projection. We just didn't do that at this time. And if it gets to that point and you really wanna investigate it, that's something that we've done, then we can more than, we can move and we're gonna breaking that down. And I think, and right here on the long enough, when you talk about the capital expenditures, I think that's based off of doing, like, a, a, you know, which is what we're expecting?
Correct. So when we're replacing apparatus, we would use similar to what we did with our area. The 10-year low interest payment plan stresses out so you're not taking a million dollars or $50,000 all out in one shot. So knowing that you're always gonna have an apparatus, same with some form, that's built into that, and you're always gonna have needs to replace, SBA and stuff like that. And I'm not gonna disagree, $100,000 may be low, but we at least put a number in there to capture and stay consistent with that number to at least give people an idea. If at any given time someone thinks capital expenses is more like $150,000, we simply re, replike it in and we rerun the numbers for the 10-year period. But it gave us a starting point. So, on the last phase, is our comparison between not only the district budget, but the city consolidation budget, we also accounted for what if we do nothing and we stay status quo as we are today, as two separate departments? So, the district budgets have been pulled over from that sheet. There's the actual budget set for 2019 for the city and for Greenville Township with the combined, and the combined total for those two departments. So, when you do that for the 10-year plan, the operational savings is over $609,000 over 10-year periods. You also have the savings in apparatus of almost $1.4 million. That's accounting for, we would not have, the city would not have to replace engine 141, and the township would have no need to replace 542, 544, and eventually 593. And the reason 593 would not have to be replaced, no matter what we could do, there is a plan to combine the cities, the area unit, which is 161, and one of our quarter engines, which is 143. The future plan in the next couple of years after a lot of state office, you get rid of both of those vehicles and merge those capabilities into one vehicle. And that vehicle would have the same capability as 193, so there's no reason to have two of them. And those are estimated, and I believe somewhat conservative values of what those apparatus will cost to replace. So you have a total savings of almost $2 million over a 10-year period, accounting for the savings in apparatus and the savings in operations. Under the consolidation of the city government form, it's the same thing, same numbers we carried over from the city's budget sheets, and you'll see apparatus savings remain the same. Savings in operations went over $1.9 million, and we have a total savings of over $3.3 million over a 10-year period. So, it's about a $1.2 million difference between the two forms.
And that difference is just because of the clerk?
The clerk and the health insurance, yes, sir.
But we're guessing at the numbers of the health?
We are guessing.
Yes, sir. That's, there's really no...
Until we put a pencil to it and do the same thing, if this many employees have a city policy, what's the cost? If we have this over, we can use the township tomorrow and go, if we have this employees under a township, and that's it, the dots for a district, what's our cost? We know it's gonna go up, but we don't know if it'll be lower than what the township's paying now, or if it would actually go up and be higher with the township's employees paying now.
As far as the clerk, a clerk of $60,000, we can use the 50,000 dollars for paying.
And again, that number was, there's no, we just, that was the number we've used. If a clerk is $40,000, it's $20,000 savings times 10, you can use a map on that. I have no idea what a full-time fire district clerk that's responsible as a fiscal officer with, what a fair salary is.
See, and therein lies the danger with throwing numbers on a sheet paper and saying, here are projected savings, because there's no validity necessarily behind that.
I admit that.
So, that leads me then to my thought process, or what I commented at our township meeting on Saturday. Rather than have you guys come up with numbers that may not have any validity to at all, I guess I would look to the city council and say, is the city council willing to maybe cost share with the township and hire an independent third party to come in and say, okay, here's your baseline, here's your population, here are your needs, here's what salary based on the department of that size should look like, and then the city and the township both get an independent review of how that, how a joint fire EMS district should be structured?
Then both parties would share the cost of this.
Yeah, the city and the township would share the cost of it in the central control and come in and...
What do you two think? Do you think you get, get outside of it?
That's, I don't think we have a position on that.
I'm asking here, I think you agree.
I don't think it's a bad idea. First of all, there's, I know there's a lot of them out there that their specialty, their consulting specialty is what we're talking about, district or mergers or whatever you wanna call it.
I mean, no.
I can't say which is the best one, and I'm gonna have you two governing bodies come to an agreement of which one you want to use.
Well, so to me, that would be answered by, we put it out there, that our entity requests for...
Well, we're, yeah, so requests for proposal.
And we basically put it out there that the city of Greenville and Greenville Township are looking for consultants to do this. Everybody submits their, or various companies that are interested in that would submit their...
Qualifications.
Qualification, yeah, thank you. And then, basically from there, then the ad hoc committee and us will sit down and look through those qualifications, see who we would agree upon, and then go forward with that.
That's how I would, isn't it? Work. Jeff, what do you think?
I, I like what he said.
Say it again.
Well, I think he said I like what he said.
What'd you say, Jeff?
I said, I like what he said. Can you make that out? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, now I can.
I apologize for not being able to be there. I'm under quarantine for a couple more days.
But we appreciate you not being here.
Yeah, 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 no problem. I'm glad we have this apparatus called Zoom, let me tell you. If I could get a copy of what you guys are looking at, I would appreciate that.
I'll make it happen, sir.
Russ, good job, good job in your presentations, you guys. I mean, this makes a lot of financial sense, in my estimation. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot more nuances to it, but I like this.
He does a great job.
Good job.
Did he winter off the ball? That's a real...
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I didn't think that it doesn't matter, it wouldn't mean anything.
Well, we can get the word out to see who we can get.
Now, I'm gonna ask this, I guess, from what you all are talking about, we believe giving enough presentation that you're saying it's worth spending whatever it costs, $25,000 for consulting for them, but...
I will have to bring it up.
That's where I'm gonna ask. I mean, I know these consulting firms for these districts don't come cheap. I might be hiding my number, but if you're going to go that route, then that tells you that you are at least see the savings potential, and it's worth spending X amount of dollars for this consulting firm to come in and do it.
But yes, there is a great savings, and if that's what the committee wants, then...
Here's where I'm at on that, if I can interject. So, I see the savings listed here in the district, I see the savings listed on your proposal for the city providing service. No, that's what we've been down that path before, and it didn't go well, and I know I don't, shouldn't be, you've got old stuff, but I don't see that as a realistic option. So, I mean, I'm willing to, I, as one of three, am willing to say that I think the township should help put the bill for that, for a consultant to come in, then we get an independent review, and it takes a motion to the hall of tables.
Absolutely. Because then it's strictly dollar consensus.
Sure.
And they're not, I mean, they're gonna be looking at different departments all over the state, run volume, and there may be another situation exactly like ours on the eastern side of the state, and we may be able to pay three million dollars. You never know.
Sure.
And maybe they come back to where I'm gonna have their money saved. I don't know, but I think it can save us a lot of heartache in the long run by letting someone with some fresh eyes take a look at this.
I, I agree with you. So, would you want to go back to council and say, hey, are we willing to pull you up money?
I have to.
So, based on what you and Jeff, or where you guys are... So based on what you and Jeff, or where you guys are, are you comfortable with recommending that?
Yes.
And then we can obviously discuss that at our next meeting if we're taking a vote on whether we're willing to help fund that or not. And then we would, I guess, reconvene with another one of these meetings where it's the ad hoc committee and our trustees. And then in that meeting, we can sit down and, and basically come up with what our request or proposal would be. And then.
Also, we can ask for a few by the next meeting.
Well, I don't know that we would have to agree together because the first, to me, I think the first thing that we would need to do then is if city council says, you're willing to put the bill for part of this.
Right.
Or half of this, then we would sit down and come up with what we're going to send out to or publish throughout Ohio to whatever trade meetings I would imagine will have fire chiefs associations and all kinds of places where, where we can basically broadcast this out and say, here's what we're looking to come talk to us. And then, so to me, we would need to all be in agreement. Once we decide everybody's willing to put the money up money, then we can all sit down and write, here's what we're looking for, then come talk to us.
Right.
So, I mean, it's going to belabor the process a little bit, but I think that'll lead to get the, in the right chain of layers.
You gotta, you gotta tell them what you're looking at.
Right. And we all need to be on the same page as far as what we're looking at, which is why I think.
This, this model we're presented right now is basically the full-time people only. So you're eliminating part-time people, correct? You're eliminating, we have part-time people on our staff, correct? You're eliminating volunteers. So then there's, there's, there's a whole different makeup that could possibly work to, and, because this is four point three million dollars in wages and wage-related expenses, yours, and only a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a cap. So you change the staff in, in any little bit, you could potentially go one way or the other.
Right.
So there could potentially be no savings or there could potentially be way more by incorporating.
Pay part-time, pay all-inclusive, volunteer, any sort of this.
Yeah, a combination.
This model, we have eliminated all that.
Right.
The tillage gone, we stopped part-time, we stopped volunteers, a hundred percent full-time through the.
See, and I'm not, and I understand that it is tough to get volunteers, but I'm not sure that it's a good idea to completely say volunteers have no place in the organization. Because volunteers are the backbone of rural fire departments across the country.
So. But also the, the backbone of the, uh, rural country is getting harder and harder every year.
To get the volunteer, yes.
Like, there's so many dropping out. We've had the same problem in downtown living, downtown, same problem.
Why, I mean, every volunteer department has.
Everybody in our county is having a problem right now.
And one more, the problem is we're having one more trouble with the part-time model. We go down, you look at Washington Township, Kettering, all those Montgomery counties that were consistently, true combination departments with full-time and part-time, they're all slowly going to full-time and getting rid of the part-time.
The younger generation.
Harder and harder remaining.
The younger generation does not want to put up with the training and, and the time and weight to their families to provide the service to the community.
You know, it, it's a big time, and that's a big express for the volunteers to be on and they volunteer personally.
I've been doing this for fifteen, four years and, and I've seen, I've seen the, the change. It's horrible.
But with that said, I also, I would still hate to say there's no place for it. And maybe that's not what you're saying, maybe we're the three.
Well, if you do a full-time model, which is your best investment model? And you can project it out what your best investment model is. But if you do a full-time model, so now you guys are going to be the highest model. With thirty-nine staff, is there, is there going to be enough hours for the part-time people?
And I think, here again, this is another, another example of why an outside consultant would be perfect.
Sure.
Because, I mean, we can sit in here and act like we know, but we really don't know. I mean, we know what's going on right here in Greenville Township and Greenville City and that's, and we can get a pretty good idea of what's going on in other departments, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is we really don't know because we don't, we don't understand the financials, like, you know, looking at Pickwell, they got, I understand the apparatus difference, are they fire EMS? Do they have thirty-four guys? Do they, I mean, there's just a lot of things that, I mean, there's question marks that I think could be filled in by someone else saying, this is how typical ones set up, this is where they're, you know, this is the layout, this is how many guys, this is how many states, this is how many people. And, and this is what it costs. And then we have all of our budget information on wherever, not where we're at now, and it'd be pretty simple to lo, look at the few numbers and say, all right. And then say, for instance, if the district's the way to go, we've already got the company right there with their recommendation on how to do it and we're all ready, starting now, not that. I was always told you do it right the first time and you don't have to do it again. And that's the way I like to do it.
Your order?
Your order.
Okay. You got it?
Jimmy, Jimmy, you got it?
Do you have a political statement for us?
You open.
Anybody got anything else?
So is this, so that I understand, or so, we're, we all understand sequence of events here, so you're going to go with the, the results of this meeting, find out if there's buy-in or not in terms of the consultant, then we can meet back at some other point, sit down together, write what we would like for the consultant to provide to us.
Sure.
And then we ship that out collectively.
Yes, perfect. Thank all three of you for the, uh, coming tonight.
Well, I, I mean, we'd like to thank you for having us. I mean, just like what we talked about, the, the whole volunteer situation, it's, it's a problem everywhere and just that our main concern, and I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure Matt and Justin will agree, our main concern is taking care of the people. I mean, I've been through a fire, I've had a house fire, I know what it's like and I don't want anyone else to have to deal with that. If they do, I want to take care of it quick, so.
Well, if the county overall, there's a good response, but like you said, the volunteers, whether they're paid or unpaid, it's going downhill. And it's, everybody's had a hard, hard time retaining their people.
And truth be told, when you take that one, ten or twenty bucks or run into a burning building, that's never enough.
And then on the other aspect, that means they're not.
Yeah.
Most departments in the county don't get paid.
The fact of the matter is a lot of businesses out there have a hard time keeping people and they're paying them enough.
Right.
So, I mean, imagine if they'd like to do a service, they're basically not, and find good people to do it.
Sure.
Okay, does one of you take your run?
A run, yes. You're not going to get rich if you're a run. Like we was out at nine thirty this morning and got back in at three o'clock that evening.
Yeah, one run.
One run. Okay. Anybody got anything else? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'll get with council and then I'll get back with you.
All right.
Thanks to everyone.
Well, that.
Good night, Jeff.